Isom?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Harris?
Not telling you.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Here.
Zingy? Zingy.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First thing on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution 162627 amending the 2016 general government operating capital budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the fire department of $4,000. Is anybody here to speak to that? Hearing none, we'll move on from that and close the public hearing and move into communications. If we have anything other than approving the draft Swan Lake operation maintenance budget. And that brings us to persons to be heard. Keith must start us off.
Thank you. My name's Keith Smith. I'm with Southeast Alaska Independent Living and I just had some remarks to make about the ongoing issue with providing accessible taxi cabs here in Ketchikan. Wanted to start by thanking you all. I think beginning back in October, we've been working through a process both involving city management and also the police. Officers have been helping us as well. The idea starting that in order, a pathway to achieving accessible cabs in Ketchikan would be to create a structure of incentives that would get them to want to participate. In doing that, I think the last time I was at a meeting before we issued the RFP, the city, you, pretty unanimously in discussion, committed to the idea of providing two additional certificates to anyone who would provide, who would take on this service. And Sale would manage it and provide the two cabs that we had funding for. That RFP was issued and unfortunately, there were no respondents. And so that leaves us now, I just, I guess, to this point, and I just first wanted to say that we and the community I think that we represent are not going to drop this. We're committed to it and we're going to move on. We are currently applying for and we have some indication that we will get approval, but it's not official for an extension on our grants, the most important being the DOT grant for this fiscal year ending this June for one of those cabs. Because we think it's important to have two cabs as part of it. I think how we get someone involved to provide this service may need some additional strategizing and some additional participation from your part as well and maybe from Sale. And I just wanted to come forward with a couple of ideas. As I've mentioned to some people, my first choice personally is that we should recognize the taxi system as a public convenience that is using public resources in order to make a living. Those resources include sanctioned parking spots in prized locations that the city provides for them. And maybe one of the most important things that the city provides for them as providing, in order to provide this public convenience, is the protection against competition. The city protects them from competition and we feel that they, as companies, should therefore make their services accessible to the entire community. The entire community is helping them protect their business and they therefore need to serve the entire community. And that's kind of how, the same way it works when we demand certain entities that are building a public building to put an elevator in it, is the entire community is putting forward the resources allowing that the building to take place, to be built. And they in turn need to make sure that the entire building is accessible to all the people that are co-owners of that. In that spirit, I would like it, and my preference would be that if the council mandated accessible service from the taxi companies, I don't think, I think that would be onerous if it was in a short term, like you can do it tomorrow. But if there was a three-year limit, saying by a certain...
Jan Lee, could you put your phone on mute? What you're doing there is being disruptive during the talking.
Oh, sorry, I thought I had enough.
Thank you.
It was kind of scaring me.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. If a time period by which the companies would provide that service was, gave them time to build and plan for that, and yet at the same time, our objective, having that service as soon as possible reissued an RFP, there might be some company that would say, hey, we're going to have to do this sooner or later. Here is a chance for us to get very inexpensive cabs, additional benefits from the voucher program that would come in in the next year, and let's get on board. And it would also ensure that the cabs were particularly well-treated because they know at the end of the three-year period, they would still have to have them. So that's one simple way, but there are other options as well. One is that we know of at least one company, and that is the company currently in Juno that is operating, Junotaxi Inc. Cab is operating the accessible cab system in Juno. They would be happy to come down here, but what they would need in order to make that successful financially is they would need additional certificates beyond the two. Because in order to make the whole thing work financially, they would need to have a sustainable cab company. So the number was thrown out, maybe three. Three additional certificates and then two for the accessible vehicles. And then doing that, they could run a small cab company and they think that they could make that successful. So that is one option, is to say, okay, if you don't want to have an accessible, if you don't want to make your company accessible, we're going to stop protecting you from competition by opening up this option. They already have a number of certificates by which they could support and sustain an accessible service, but they're not electing to do it. Someone who does do it, they see that in order to make it work financially, they'll need those additional certificates, maybe three additional and a five total. Stop protecting them and let's put an RFP out for that. Or another combined solution is that we could actually issue a very simple RFP where any company that chose to participate would say what they needed in order to be successful providing that service. And let's take, let's take the lowest bidder. The lowest bidder is someone that wants, needs three additional certificates and two to make it, maybe that's the lowest bidder. Maybe that would be an incentive in itself, knowing that someone is going to do it. And if they don't want the competition to do it, then maybe they need to be the lowest bidder in terms of what they're going to have to require in order to provide that service. An option like that. I'm just throwing out, there are other ones that happy to discuss with you or management or others, but I would, I hope that over time, we will get this extension on the cab so we can work towards a solution. And I look forward, I know, because I've talked to each one of you individually and know that you are committed to something working out for this town and for the people that need those services, that we'll come up with some kind of solution together here over the next six months. And I appreciate your participation.
Any questions for Keith? Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Joel?
Joel Jackson, 177 Martin Buggy Road, here representing Akila in the Akila lease extension. If anybody has questions, I'll be available. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Eric?
Eric Wolf, SEPA, 1901st Avenue. I'm here, I just want to talk a little bit about SEPA's proposal to KPU and a little bit of the history behind that regarding the KPU turned down for generation such that we don't spill at Swan Lake if possible. It's largely a storm mitigation measure and SEPA staff brought the issue to the SEPA Board in December and explained that the so-called 5-megawatt load bank was not in lieu of a KPU generation turned down, but needed to be done in addition to an agreement with KPU. And that was a unanimous vote to direct staff to enter into talks with KPU Electric Staff. We then selected ahead of time, but in conjunction with talking with Bailey, Bailey Operations, what is the least likely impact to KPU? Where can we do that? And that's why Beaver Falls and the Silvis Drainage was selected. Because if we turn down generation at KPU at those locations, you're least likely to spill there. You have more options to store water. Silvis is the primary storage reservoir. Given that, if you did select Ketchikan Lakes, and I want to just go into this detail a little bit, you're likely to spill during a storm there over a wooden structure which would trigger a FERC action. You have to write a letter to FERC and it's just an operational issue, you just don't, you just want to avoid it. So we weren't trying to limit Ketchikan's options. We were trying to impact them in the least way to gain one to two megawatts, maybe up to three during storms. That's the basis for why we brought a document and the basis behind the document that you may have seen, that SEPA staff brought to KPU Electric. The proposal was turned down, it was similar to the Whitman True-Up. And that is when we reported that back to the northern communities, when the tone of things started to change and the northern communities really didn't want to work. Not only with Ketchikan, but with SEPA staff, they didn't, they didn't like the idea anymore. It wasn't a result of a singular thing. It was a tone that happened, as these do, over a few months. With that, the background to that, I just want to say that all three parties are treated the same. We've had to have discussions with Petersburg and we removed interruptible power item that they had. They had an interruptible power clause, a lower rate than Ketchikan paid. 2011, we cut that and canceled it, rejection to Petersburg, because it was unfair to Ketchikan. So I just want to leave that up there as well, that our operations plan is a SEPA Board of Directors approved plan and this proposal was part of that ops plan. I'm available for any questions, now or later.
Bob? So what level is the lake at now?
320, 3.2. It's seven feet from spill.
Seven feet from spill?
Yeah.
Is that the optimum level we want to continue through?
No, it's actually pretty scary to look at that level and to see guys working just a few feet away. If we get another storm, we'll have to stop construction. We have to have time to move the, move the flexiflue barge out of the way, get people off the dam. You can't just run it right up there and...
No, but is the seven-foot below spill is where you want to keep it?
No, we need to draft about 10 feet.
Jenny?
I'm a little confused. You say that you, this document was prepared and you presented it to KPU and it was rejected. And then you called the northern communities? Was that document?
No, we...
That's what I just...
Sorry. That is what I probably inferred.
Okay.
We just recorded back, a little, maybe a little prior to the board meeting, they asked through Trey, you know, did that work? And so we had really nothing to bring to the board in April meeting, yeah, April meeting.
So you didn't approach the whole board before just the northern communities? Is that, I'm just trying to...
No, sure, sure.
Clear.
Every Tuesday, we have a scheduled call.
Okay. So it's during...
And all three municipal managers are typically on that call. And this proposal and discussion was underground or background to that scheduled call for about a month.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eric, the only comments I have in this one, this all came up and we've already had meetings with SEPA and the KPU together, me and Bob met with the KPU and we planned that meeting with SEPA. I think this, and I know, I know there's frustration between the two managements from KPU to SEPA, but one of the things that came to our attention was at that council meeting, but we had a SEPA meeting the Thursday before, and if we're having that much problem, the three communities are the board of directors. We should have been talking about that with the three communities right there and the representatives. And this wasn't ever even brought up as a problem over the horizon until the next council meeting, the next week, where it just was blown on us. And I, and I mentioned it to Trey too. I mean, we should have been talking about this. We are, the three communities are SEPA too. It's just not SEPA management and SEPA, we could have, all three communities could have just hashed out a whole bunch of stuff right there and then we knew what was going on. So that's communication, 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 that's all I can say.
Mayor Williams, you're spot on there. In hindsight, part of it is, these things come up from time to time and they blow away because the weather changes. And that's what happens often. So part of us, we're just hoping we wouldn't need to even deal with it.
I understand.
But you're right. I think that, you're absolutely right.
And we want to keep the, you know, we've already put up $350,000 to keep burning some water out there, you know, and we're wanting to make sure it's safe out there and you guys are getting the job done. I mean, this is, we got to get it done. We made the commitment now for the summer, so now it's supposed to come ahead. And so any other thing that comes up, if there, we have to know so we can make some decisions, so we can keep on top of this. I don't want anything, I don't want us to not be communicating between all the parties. So we know what's going on, we make decisions and we move forward. And people aren't going, debating back and forth with each other between the managements. We've got to be working together, so. Talk, talk, talk. Anybody else?
Yeah, Eric, are we making progress in getting down another 10 feet?
Yeah, we're getting there. We're a little bit, you know, it's raining.
Yeah.
But we're doing what we can to keep Swan as low as, as high as possible.
Anybody else? Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Nobody else has signed up to speak to the council tonight? Is anybody else here I'd like to address the council? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. I have a couple to throw out. I was thinking if you guys had no objections, 6A1, extension of the Akila lease, 6A2, the lease with the hospital, and then 6B1, the exemption procurement of, from bidding, I think we've talked about that a couple times. And then the only others I had were B3, I mean, new business, B3, 5, and 7.
What were the other ones that you put on?
B. B3, 5, and 7. Hearing no objections, we'll go with those. Do you have a motion to consent?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Madam President, can you read the items?
Yes.
We'll take our time.
Approval of minutes, special city council meeting of May 13th, 2016. Resolution number 162627 amending the 2016 general government operating capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department for $4,000. Budget transfer from appropriated reserves of the general fund to the law department's 2016 health and life insurance account. Declaration of surplus telecommunications equipment. Ordinance 161819, extension of the term of lease of certain real property to Akila Inc. through December 31st, 2016, second reading. Ordinance 161820, amendment to the lease of certain real property, city real property to peace health to include the description of additional real property in the lease premises, second reading. Request to exempt the procurement of ComSoft's ComNextin II suite and related maintenance and supported contract from competitive bidding requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code deferred from May 19th, 2016. Exempting the procurement of optimization services for the telecommunications division from the competitive bid written quotation requirements of Ketchikan Municipal Code, Erickson Elec, Inc. Budget transfer 2016 electric division infrastructure account. Change order number two to contract 1521 Two Point Chlorination Facility BAM LLC.
All right. Any comments? Call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That passed a seven-nothing, brings us, that brings us down to 6A3, appointments to boards and commissions. We have one, Rod Gray, back to the Portland Harbor Board, which he's on right now. This says expires in June 2020. Is it a four-year season or is it?
No.
Or should that be a...
Shouldn't be 2020. Yeah, no, they're only three years.
Yeah, so, June 2019.
It would be 19.
Yeah, okay. So, 20 is coming fast. Any objection? Hearing none, we'll have Rod back on there. Thank you very much. That brings us down to new business, general government, 7A, amendment number one, contract number 1327, peace health, Ketchikan Medical Center subdivision, Dal, HKM. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council authorize amendment number one to the contracts number 1327. With Dal, HKM, any amount up to exceed $29,856, authorize a budget transfer of $29,856 from the appropriated reserve of the hospital sales tax fund to the public health department T cells, Ketchikan Medical Center subdivision capital account, and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council.
Moved and seconded. Bob, do you have anything?
No, I think this is still just cleaning up and getting things divided so we can continue to move forward with the project and get an accurate description of the properties.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That passed a seven-nothing, brings us down to 7A2, resolution 162626, levying a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business personal property in the city of Ketchikan for the 2016, providing for the collection of sales tax due in 2016 and prescribing penalties and interest for delinquent taxes. I think we set our budget up for 6.7 again as last year. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve resolution number 16-2626, levying the general tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business personal property in the city for the year 2016, providing for the collection of taxes due in 2016, prescribe penalties and interest in delinquent taxes and establish an effective date.
We have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anything to add, Bob?
Well, I just, you know, if you look at the chart in the back, the tax has been 6.7 since 2013 and the city has done, I think, a reasonable job of trying to keep those rates as stable as possible over time.
Son, you have a stick?
Yeah, just for the public's information, the borough assessment for the property went up at 3.72 percent, so there will be a little bit of increase in taxes.
Thank you, Vic. Call the roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
All right, that passed a seven-nothing, brings us down to 7A3, request for removal of trees within the undeveloped 5th Avenue and Washington Street right-of-ways, Gary Souza. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council authorize Gary Souza of 2306, 6th Avenue, to remove and/or trim trees within the undeveloped 5th Avenue and Washington Street right-of-ways as detailed in the senior engineering technician's report dated May 24th, 2016.
Moved and seconded. Dave?
I'm just curious, so we do this, we have to vote on this, why?
Well, this is...
I assume something happened in the past that leads us to have to vote on it?
This one in the past has caused a lot of neighborhood outrage and that's why I wanted to make sure we talk, make sure, Dave, we have talked to the neighbors and everything. This came down to a real standoff. And we finally did do the trees and I just want to make sure all the property owners around there have been notified and know what's going on.
If they haven't, they will be.
Okay. Should we wait to then approve this until something's been sent out? Because I don't want them to start chopping.
We certainly can.
Okay. Hunter? Yep.
I move to defer.
Let's move it to the next meeting. Make sure everybody's notified because this has been a contentious area. And I mean, I'm all for it. It went really well last time after it was done, but people have really issues on trees and so we want to make sure that we got everything covered. Do we have a motion to defer? Call the roll, please.
Till the next council meeting.
Correct.
And that's understanding all the property owners, adjacent property owners that we notified, correct?
Correct. So, no, you're not for the sound machines.
Do we have a second?
Get down.
Yes, we did.
Somebody seconded.
KJ, I believe.
Harris?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Okay.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Mm-hmm.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Yeah, that passed a seven-zero. I will take care of that next meeting. That brings us down to 7A4, 161821, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section 3.04, by adding definitions of marijuana and marijuana products, levying an additional 5% sales tax on retail sales of marijuana and marijuana products, and adding a schedule for collection of sales taxes on marijuana and marijuana products, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council approve first reading order number 16-1821, amending section 3.04.010 by adding definitions of marijuana and marijuana products, amending KMC section 3.04.020 to levy the additional 5% sales tax on retail sales of marijuana and marijuana products, amending KMC 3.04.040 to add a schedule for the collection of sale tax on marijuana and marijuana products and establish an effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob?
Yeah, I think this is just moving forward, through all the discussion on the marijuana, one of the items that was mentioned is the fact that the municipalities have the option to make some revenue off of this particular item and I think that's putting it in place as we've talked in the past. And so I think this is probably a good first step on that. I think the 5% is comparative to whether, what other communities are doing up north in regards to their marijuana tax or excise tax. In Ketchikan, I think the sales tax is the most appropriate because we already have a way to collect it and manage it.
Anybody else?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Once again, I just wanted to, as of last week, no, we haven't said yet, we haven't said yes to the sales of marijuana, but we haven't prohibited anything. According to our city attorney, that means the same thing. According to people that I talk to downtown, it does not mean the same thing. I'm just saying. It's okay to tax, and we haven't decided to sell it yet, but it's okay to worry about the money. It just seems a little bit cart before the horse kind of thing. I just wanted to toss that in.
Thank you very much, KJ. I think we're on the road to taxing the sales.
Yeah, we...
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
No, ma'am.
Six to one. That brings us down to new business, 7B1, exemption procurement of annual 4G LTE maintenance and support services for our telecommunications division from competitive bid written... from competitive bid written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Erickson Inc. Do we have a motion?
Pursuant to sub-paragraph six of section three point one, two point oh five, oh, is that one?
I'm getting there, are you?
I just want to make sure I'm...
Your Honor, I want...
Your Honor, I want...
I want to write, it's two pages long, I want a reading, get it...
You're good, you're good.
Okay, I'm just afraid this is, something disappeared in the middle of, you know, consent agenda. Of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the city council exempt the procurement of annual four G LTE maintenance and support services for the telecommunications division from the competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, authorize the general manager to enter into an agreement of such, for such annual four G LTE maintenance and support services with Erickson Incorporated, dating an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and approve funding from the telecommunications division's two thousand and sixteen software equipment maintenance services account, number six three five dash oh four.
Second. Moved and seconded, Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I just want to remind everybody that when we went with the Verizon package, that that locked us into using the Erickson programs and products. And so, even though we're going through this, we've already made an agreement with Verizon that we were going to continue down this path.
Your Honor.
KJ?
Just for general information, I spent some time at the manager's office and assistant manager's office, and I am being told that this whole project is making money. It's in the black, so as far as I'm concerned, as long as it's making money, we ought to keep adding to it and doing this stuff. That's all.
All right, anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Okay.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, nothing, that brings us to seven B two, ordinance number sixteen eighteen eighteen, amendage after eleven twelve, Ketch, telecommunications services and rates, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve first reading, ordinance number sixteen dash eighteen eighteen, amending chapter eleven point twelve, one, two, telecommunication services and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, providing a public hearing and establishing effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment? Dave? So, when I was reading through here, we're looking at recovering some re, um, some fees on us, correct? Is that what it...
Been a little bit more detailed, I wish.
And I just want to, it'd be put out over the wire so people understand what's going on.
Sure. So, Ed Cushing, division manager, KPU telecommunications, there are essentially three primary moving parts to this ordinance. The first has to do with the TV packages we offer our customers. Presently, we offer three packages, small, medium, and large. And each of those packages includes range, ranges of a total number of channels from one hundred and eighty to two hundred and eighty. Most of our customers don't want that many channels, that many would come in and take three or four or five if they could, but in the United States, you can't, because our CC regulation prevents us from doing that. But what we are able to do is adopt a different method of offering channels that we call skinny bundles. Essentially, a customer comes in and says, I'll take your starter pack, and I'll take your sport package, and they'll walk out the door with, say, twenty channels. Or I'll take your starter pack and your kids' pack, and they'll walk out the door with thirty or forty channels. But in any event, they'll walk out the door paying us less money than they otherwise would have if they'd taken one of these great big packages. And counter-intuitively, we make more money if they do that. Why? Because the fewer channels a customer has, the smaller the check we have to write to content providers at the end of the month. So that's the first moving part of this ordinance, is to create these skinny bundle packages so we can offer our customers a service that's more in line with what they want, and so we can make more money. That's one.
Okay.
Two, a broadcast surcharge. To put this in context, the check that we write to content providers, so NBC, ABC, Fox, Nickelodeon, you name it, what we call content providers, three years ago, our annual cost for those was roughly nine hundred thousand a year. Today, it's one point four million per year. It's gone up over five hundred thousand dollars in just three years. Our costs have increased. One of the primary drivers of that increase is what we have to pay ABC, NBC, CBS. Those are the networks that we have to carry, which is not mandatory, it's not optional on our part. And knowing that they have a lock, they hit us with what are called retransmission fees. And we're in no position to negotiate, because we have to take it. It's a practical matter, we have to recover our costs, we can't eat it. So what we've decided to do, rather than simply raising our TV package rates, is create a retransmission regulatory fee charge at the end of the bill, very similar to what airlines do. You buy your airline ticket, and then you have the list of all the taxes and fees, that's what we're going to do. So customers can become more in tune with what's really going on here. In our case, it equates to six dollars and seventy-nine cents a month. So that actually does equate to, if you're one of our television customers, an increase of six dollars and seventy-nine cents a month. That's our reality, and we have, we have to face up to it and pass it along. Third primary piece of this has to do with internet rate charges. There are two elements to the internet rate charges. One is for customers that have our TV service, but don't want internet service. Those customers create a back-office problem for us, because our internet service is provided over a DSL internet line, if you will. So even though they don't want internet service, they have internet service, from a technical perspective. So we've always charged those customers fourteen ninety-five a month to cover our regulatory costs of providing that service to them. Over time, our regulatory cost has gone up, so we need to raise their, their no, no internet internet charge. And so that's going from fourteen ninety-five to eighteen ninety-five a month. And then we have a subset of customers who have very low internet speed, less than a meg, one meg per month. We have been charging, we used to have six or seven hundred customers like that, and we migrated into different packages, and that's great. We're now down to a hundred and fifty customers who still have that service. But our regulatory cost of allowing them to have that service has risen over time, so for that hundred and fifty customers, we're raising their monthly rate from twenty-four ninety-five to twenty-nine ninety-five. And that's to cover our cost. And that's...
That's all three.
That's it.
Yeah, I heard the skinny bundle seems to be the new thing.
Yes.
I hear it all over the news, the financial channels. So now I could go in there and ask, I mean, have we, have we mapped out what our skinny bundles are going to be?
We, we have, only I, I don't have them in my head or in front of me. But because in the consent agenda, you, you agreed to our Comsoft connection, putting that capability in our system, once we're all set, then you'll be able to go online, decide what you'd like to do, and do it, and check your bill, without having to talk to one of our reps or one of our...
And so I could, you know, drop one thing and hook up another sports channel, whatever. Now, if I'm, like, I'm sitting at my house, it's Saturday, and I don't have the channel I want to watch a ballgame, can I go on that right away and then switch, or does it take time to get that channel you want?
No, you can go on and do it, you'll be able to go and do it right away.
Okay.
For a fee.
Thank you very much, that's why, I just wanted to explain to everybody, thank you, because it does affect one of our customers.
Hopefully skinny bundles are good, skinny jeans.
Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, nothing, in first reading, we'll see that again next meeting, that brings us down to seven B four, budget transfer four G LTE equipment and services, Erickson Inc. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve a budget transfer in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars from, within the two thousand sixteen KPU annual budget from the software and equipment maintenance services account, number three sixty-five point zero four, to the four G LTE capital project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Dave, do you have anything?
No sir.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes ma'am.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to seven B six, addendum to the master services agreement between the city of Ketchikan, DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and City West Cable and Telephone, Inc., do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve Schedule Four Service Order Forum Addendum to the Master Service Agreement between the city of Ketchikan, DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and City West Cable and Telephone Corporation to add additional internet and layer-two transport capacity between Prince Rupert Canada and Seattle, Washington, for additional annual costs and additional non-reoccurring installation costs in the amount as indicated in the confidential memorandum within funding to come from the telecommunications division, two sixteen, rent and lease infrastructure account, account number six four five point oh four.
Second.
Moved and seconded. There is an option, option for executive session, want to talk about it in executive session, otherwise we can continue.
I think I'd like to put it in the executive session, if we could, please.
Madam Clerk, so we can just put on pause and just go vote on the executive session?
Yes.
Bob, do you want to make a motion for executive session?
Are we there yet?
Well, yeah, let's do it now, then come back and deal with it. It's our last time for...
Your Honor, I move the city council find that consistent with the Assistant General Manager's memorandum dated May twenty-four, two sixteen, it is in the city's best interest to consider such matters in executive session, that the council go into executive sessions under KMC, two point zero four point zero two five A one entry to review and discuss those aspects of the City West Schedule Four Service Order from SOF Addendum to MSA, signed May thirty-first, two fifteen, which contains information required to be confidential pursuant to the Alaska Trade Secret Act.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded, call the roll.
Kifer?
No.
Harris?
No ma'am.
Gage?
No.
Kuz?
Oh, like I was saying, yeah, to stay, have stayed generally.
Because you can't go into the executives.
Oh, yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Mayor Williams.
Isom. Oh, Isom?
Yes.
And Severson?
Yes.
And now the mayor's...
I vote yes. Okay, we'll adjourn out of this one real quick, meet in executive session, be right back.
Generally, you missed nothing.
Wow.
Okay, we'll adjourn out of that...
I feel so out of the loop.
Well, adjourn out of that executive session, which was the most informative one we ever had, generally. Sorry you missed out. And we're back in session at the regular meeting, I think we're at our motion is on the floor. For seven B six, on the addendum, do we have any other comments? Call the roll.
Harris?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Gage?
She can't.
Is that a yes?
Oh, sorry, abstain, you weren't here.
Yeah.
Yeah, she can vote if she wants.
Oh, she's, she's, I'm sorry, she said yes, okay. Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, nothing, that brings us down to vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News, one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents, do we have a motion?
Yeah, what do we do about...
Well, I forgot.
I apologize. All right, we have the draft Swan Lake operation maintenance budget, we're going to add that, if there's five hands for seven B eight. Do we have five hands, one, two, three, four, five? And so that is on the gen... It's on the gen, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve the draft Swan Lake operation maintenance budget in the amount of eighty, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand quarter ninety-six dollars to take the year ending in two thirty of two thousand seventeen, and authorize the general manager and electric division manager to present the proposed penalty management fee.
Second. Moved and seconded. Dick, do you have any questions, Andy, are you here?
Not really, I think there's some places where you collect some money, because it doesn't make any sense, I think there's a sense to speak to them and deal with it.
If you let us, let me know, I'll make sure I bring you that. Anybody else? Hello, Bob?
I think it's important to know that, I don't know, Andy or Trey would have an answer, how many people have to look at this budget before it actually gets back?
Trey Agerson, CEO of CEPA. Hey, George, the council here votes to approve it, the draft budget, but in reality, the budget's done, it goes out in the morning. We've been working with KPU behind the scenes to get some input for certain expenditures, but in actuality, it actually gets approved. The formal approval is by CEPA, which has obviously helped members for a couple of days.
That's June eight, Tuesday night.
It's coming up.
Thanks, Trey. All right, call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Okay.
All right, that passes seven, zip, that brings us down to approve of vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News, one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents, do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move for the approval of vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call the roll. Oh, sorry.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, that passes. All right, that brings us down to city managers' report, Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
How many questions on the managers' board? All right, city clerks file.
None, Your Honor.
City attorney? Future agenda items? Mayor and council comments, Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing, my dear honor.
General Lee?
Nothing.
Julie? Bob?
Yes, Your Honor, a couple things, I noticed that in the Swan Lake package, we have a D one gravel thing for the facility, and hopefully we can coordinate barge work, since we have barges going in and out during the construction, we have that potential. Trey, go ahead.
As part of the Swan Lake four expenditure project, we actually have provision in that contract for them to dress up the road after construction, so we won't be needing that, we've already had quite a bit of aggregate that's been taken after the site was supersized, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Trey. Um, the other thing is, um, I'd like to say thank you to the segments and the people taking care of the baby cemetery, uh, over Memorial Day. It was, um, it was taken care of, it was very nice. Um, and I'd also like to say thank you to Roland Stanton. He did the, a lot of the initial planting of the shrubs and trees and stuff out there that are blooming today, and I think he deserves a thank for that. Um, and Steve does a wonderful job out there, and it looked good. The other thing is, um, I want to emphasize bi local. And I, and I think that includes the City of Ketchikan. I've heard of a couple incidents where we may be doing some things that, uh, working with local providers, but then we end up going out. And, and I'm understanding if there's a large difference and stuff, but, uh, those individuals are here paying taxes and, uh, you know, the economy, I, I've been out talking to a lot of business people, was pretty tough this winter. Uh, some of them had the roughest winters they've had. And if we don't, as the City of Ketchikan, support our local vendors, um, I think we're doing them a disservice. Bi local.
Thanks, Bob. Abe?
I did know what I'm about to say about the suns are gorgeous out there. I'm from more of those stuff. And also shopping local as well. Um, just one, one point. I'm kind of concerned if we're going to start referring to Wrangell and Petersburg as the northern communities, it's like we're kind of getting ready to go Game of Thrones on a little bit. So maybe that one I come with a little bit of a different refer to them, but, you know.
Thank you. Did I ask, did I ask General Lee if she had comments? Okay. Thank you. Um, KJ?
Uh, the only thing I got is I want to say good job to our Public Works Department. They came up on Grant Street, fixed all the wood and stairs that were up there. And they only got, well, hey, I came down and mentioned it to Dave, it was the next day. It's a really nice day up. If you got a problem with your stairways or any of your street things, try to give somebody a call, and we'll see if we can't get it fixed. Good job, guys.
Thanks, KJ.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I add something to that for KJ?
You bet.
I have two lists, two streets that I've been, the stairs I've gone up, uh, Jackson and, um, Parnell actually have, um, some loose steps. Parnell, I have to go now.
Parnell?
Yeah, but I have them written down so I can give them to you.
Yeah, give it, um, give a call to Dave.
Okay.
Thanks.
Dave Kifer. Dave, right.
Tag it, Dave. All right, all right. Um, that brings on to me. I want to see, does anybody want to do a radio show tomorrow? Going once, twice. Yeah, we do. It's coming up. Seeing that at this moment. Bob's got it. And then I, I want to thank the BFW and the Legion for inviting me to the memorial sort of thing up there at the, um, um, cemetery. Boy, there was a lot, a lot of mayors there, and Senator Rikowski was there.